You're good to go.
Good evening. This is the July 14, 2020, meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I will open the meeting now with a moment of silence and we continue to ask you to keep our first responders, our servicemen and women, our healthcare workers and government officials in your thoughts this evening. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General law, this meeting is being audiotaped and livestreamed. If there is anyone in the audience doing the same, would you kindly identify yourselves? I don't see any. Do we see anyone, Ryan? No?
No, it looks like you're clear.
Thank you. Okay, our first item is public comments and under public comments, we have two individuals who asked to speak this evening. The first is Greg Thompson from the East Long Meadow School Committee. Mr. Thompson in the audience? Yes, he is.
Well, you may leave now.
There you go. Okay, Mr. Thompson, you're all, you're set to go.
Okay, President Hill, thank you so much. Hello, council members. Good evening. Just a few quick points I wanted to make. I am Greg Thompson. I am the school committee chair, but I wanted to, if I could, address three issues this evening real quick. I know you have a long agenda. The first one, I know we discussed prior, it has to do with the chestnut property in the proposed zoning bylaw change. Wondering if the council would consider doing an impact study prior to any zoning change. The school committee is a little worried about the impact that a 600-unit development, the development might have on the schools, as well as the traffic impact in town and the quality of life impact in town development like that might have. I know that's coming along in the planning board, in the Planning Matters Subcommittee, and in the town council. The second issue, if I could just bring up, is to address the Charter Review Committee. Wondered if in the duties and the work of that committee, if they would have an opportunity to look at the separation of powers within our charter. And specifically, I wanted to address the executive branch and the legislative branch. As many of you know, we've been in discussion in our budget development process with various subcommittees and members of the council, but just looking for a way to clean up that process so that we all know who's responsible for which portions of the process, who has authority in terms of the town manager as an executive, the school committee as the executive, and the legislative branch being the town council and their subcommittee. So, wondered if that Charter Review Committee could provide perhaps specific language, or if they feel that the language is already provided, if we could just get clarification going forward on the process. I know that everyone involved is interested and putting all their effort towards it, and I can appreciate that, but there seems to be some, I don't want to say even dispute because we're all in this together, but if we could just look at that going forward for next year's process, I think in the end, we got to some sort of reasonable result, but I think if we could delegate or designate specifically the duties that legislature have and the executive have, and their subcommittees and their authority, if we could do that too. The final one, the most important one, I didn't know, I know tonight you have the town manager's proposed budget on your agenda. I just wanted to speak briefly towards that as a school committee chair on behalf of the children of East Long Meadow. As you all know, we are in the midst of a pandemic. We are hoping to open up. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. It's going to really depend on the situation as we get closer in August. If we have all the students come back, some come back and some do virtual learning, all do virtual learning, that's still undecided yet, but our budget has an enormous impact on that and our ability to address all of those, any of those three issues or situations that occur. So, just wanted to point out that in the town manager's proposed budget this evening is the school committee's requested budget. It's an increase of 1.5%. Basically, the way we got to that number, and that was a number also calculated by the finance subcommittee, the town council's finance subcommittee, the increase from the towns portion contributed to the schools, or education, I should say, and a level funding of Chapter 70. So, those are assumptions. That's an assumption that we get level services or level funding from Chapter 70, but it's those two calculations that get us to that 1.5% increase, which comes out to be that $31,000,657,02, and that's in the line on 300 of education. That's a $909,000 decrease from our original request. So, we actually, in partnership with the rest of the town, again, we're all in this together, collectively decided to, as a school committee, to drop our request by over $900,000. We know and recognize that these are unique situations. These are tough times, but I just wanted to reiterate that we're going to need all the support and help we can get to get these kids back to school. At some point, we're going to get them back to school. So, if the council could see it in their wisdom to help us with that and to approve that budget that we're requesting, the 1.5% increase, really, we could probably use more. I know we could. We've addressed, we're not filling positions and we've sent out letters for reduction in force totaling up to potential 11 positions that we're not going to be filling next year if this budget gets approved. And we'd hate to go even further deep into that. That includes an administrator at the high school. That includes classroom teachers and includes support staff. So, we're trying our best to do what we can, but we're going to need all your help to get these kids back to school. So, we're together, one town, and I just wanted to bend all of your ears this evening. I know you have a busy agenda, so I will leave it at that. And certainly, we'll be around later in this evening, if you do get to education, to discuss our portion of the budget. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
I will see that the Planning Matters Subcommittee is aware of that request, as well as the Charter Review Committee, which just concluded at 5:30 this evening, and they are meeting weekly, and I will make them aware of that suggestion to review the sections in the charter that Greg has referred to. Okay, our next speaker this evening is Connor O'Shea regarding Article 5 of the Home Rule Charter. And Connor is in the audience? Yes. Ryan, do we see Connor?
There he is.
There he is.
Hi. Thank you, President Hill. I'm Connor O'Shea at 20 Tango Drive. I'd like to call to your attention Article 5, Section 1 of the Home Rule Charter. This section of the charter specifies, quote, "The organization of the town and to operating agencies for the provision of services and the administration of government may be accomplished only through an organization or reorganization plan filed with the town council by the town manager," end quote. The town recently abolished the dispatch department as a result of joining the Westcom Regional Dispatch District. First was a reorganization plan submitted to the town council. Additionally, the charter also requires, quote, "Whenever the town manager proposes such a plan, the town council shall hold one or brings on the proposal, giving notice by publication," end quote. No such public hearings were ever held by the council prior to the dismissal of town employees. A reorganization plan was required by the charter in this instance as Section 7 defines town agency as, quote, "Any multiple member body, any department, division, or office of the town of East Long Meadow," end quote. The town's operating budget also lists dispatch as a department, specifically 299, and it had its own director, which indicates to me that it was in fact treated as its own department that had provisioned services. I believe a core tenet of this section of the charter is to provide transparency and accountability of town government officials to residents. The council is entrusted by the public to uphold and exercise the power and proper duties of the charter. The town recently formed the Charter Review Committee, which I have the utmost confidence will provide a great report with suggested changes to the charter. My concern, however, is that any changes are only meaningful if the charter is followed to begin with. It is my hope that this violation of the public's trust does not happen again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I will, just in response to Connor's remarks, that the Charter Review Committee has met, and this evening's meeting makes four meetings thus far, they are working very seriously and with a lot of good intent and really combing word by word through the charter. That said, since all of it is under review, I would defer to their final report, which we'll probably see in the coming months, as it relates to whether or not this particular chapter is relevant or parts of it continue to be relevant. And that said, I will share this, Connor's comments with them. And also, for the record, my recollection when Mary McNally proposed the move of the dispatch to the Westcom, it was done with the understanding that they, we, the department stayed as part of the East Long Meadow organizational chart until July 1, that they couldn't officially be considered part of Westcom until they actually went live on July 1. So, under that consideration, there's, to me, there's still, we're just a few days removed from that, that I'm sure, I don't want to speak for our manager, I'll let her deal with that maybe in her report, but I don't believe there was any intent to violate the charter. Its timing was unfortunate here in that we had to be actively participating to be considered part of it. So, now the official disbandment of the dispatch department can go forward. Thank you to both of our speakers this evening. Okay, under number four, council comments. Any counselors have comments this evening?
I do.
Mr. Anderson, thank you.
Kathy, first of all, I want to wish you a very happy birthday.
Oh, my goodness, that just keeps coming back at me. Thank you. You're very welcome.
And I also want to commend you and congratulate you on two years of amazing service. I don't think the people know how much hard work you have put into the position, and I only wish you the best being a part of the council to move forward. But I do have a question that's kind of, like in my other business, precedent is always something that we rely on, and it's just, it's more of a question. It isn't, I'm not about to make a motion. I'm just really just, just asking a question. And the question is the placement of the reorganization in this agenda. And just to remind our viewers, the council was formed in, per the charter, in 2016, and of course, the reorganization was on the top. And then in 2017, as we in golf would call it, we did a mulligan. We had, instead of the first meeting in July, as an accommodation to people's schedules, we had a meeting in June and reorganized. And we were called on it appropriately by a member of the Charter Commission Committee, and then we had to do a affirmative vote later, I believe in August. Then 2018, the vote then, the matter was buried at the, at the end, similar to today. And during the council comments, the council made a motion to get out of order, and that motion was made by current counselor Tom O'Connor and seconded by then-Vice President and current Vice President Michael Kane, and it was passed unanimously to get it out of the end and bring it into the, into the beginning. In 2019, I looked at that agenda, and it was also one of the top items, but today it isn't. And again, I'm not making a motion. I'm just trying to get an understanding because the way I would understand precedent, it would be up toward the top, and not that I want to see you leave as president any sooner than you need to be, but I'm just trying to get an understanding because, believe it or not, around 2:00 in the morning, I was thinking, I said, there's something deja vu about this meeting and its placement. And then I just, you know, did research and, and found, they found this. So, again, thank you, and I'm just kind of curious how it was put together.
Okay, I can answer that as best I can. There's nothing suspect about it. Originally, when Jeannie and I built this agenda, well, we start about five days before it goes out to the council. So, early in the week preceding the meeting, we start to build the agenda and populate it with items. So, to be fair, it was right at the top, right after announcements made in accordance with NGL. One counselor who, in all likelihood, will become an officer when we reorganize, asked if I could place that agenda item at the bottom of the agenda because he felt that I had the best grasp of the content of tonight's agenda and that going forward, he, assuming he's voted chair, would be comfortable taking over. So, it's that simple. I'm not married to either, either way. I'm prepared to run the meeting, spread out here on, at my table, but if it's the, the feeling of the remainder of the council to move it to the, back to the top, so, you know, whatever the will of the committee is on this one.
Thank you.
And because now it's on the table, is there anyone on the council who wishes for it to be placed back at the top? Okay, then, hearing that, hearing no other discussion on that, is there any other council comments? Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Kathy, and I echo Don's sentiments about your service, which has been exemplary. And I know you're going to contribute just as much as you have in the past. My question is not on that subject at all. It's, I heard that the Charter Review Commission said they had received input from some counselors and others that they would decide to put aside until they were done reviewing the entire charter themselves so they'd have a fresh look at it. They're going paragraph by paragraph by paragraph, which is exactly the way I constructed my comments. I really don't see why they would deprive themselves of mine and other counselors' comments, organized in exactly the order they're approaching them, and I just, I just wondered at that. And I'm not looking for an answer, but that's, that's my comment. I hope that they would reconsider that.
I'll give you, I'm ex-official there.
Right.
As council president, the sentiment, I think, was that they wanted to work through the full document and then approach, there were three or four counselors weighed in by paper, yourself, I did. Who else? I'm, my mind, I'm getting old now, so my mind's.
It has to be Ralph.
Mr. O'Connor, right. I think they wanted just to take the momentum of moving through page by page and then go back and address it. I'm not sure there's a right or a wrong way, although I can understand what you're saying because you specifically structured your written statement to follow the, to follow the charter, which would make addressing the concerns you raised very logical and easy to do, but it was the will of that group to just address them later on. And it's not in any attempt to put them aside and disregard them, but just to do them after they've gotten through everything.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else under council comments? Okay, then we are moving to town manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The meetings on our budget creation, including our capital planning committee, continued meeting over the last two weeks, resulting in the presentation of the draft budget, which I'll address in greater detail later on in the meeting. Because there's still no certain information to guide the town through the budget preparation with respect to local aid, that is being as yet undetermined, but again, I'll go into the budget matters when we have the budget presentation later in the agenda. There are a significant number of year-end financial issues to work through in the immediate future, and we're currently understaffed in that department due to the recent unforeseen departure of a staff member. So, in addition to the administrative issues resulting from all our past payroll practices, they've been exacerbated by that person's departure. Steve Lonergan, who's at the meeting tonight, is now on board, and he's going to be key to resolving, addressing and resolving these issues. And he's done a great job in the five days he's been with us so far, well, seven counting today. The town continues to assist all the businesses as much as it possibly can in the Phase 3 now and all the various reopening phases of the governor's plan. As I had said in prior reports, the town departments were working to expedite where they could certain requirements. I know the planning department has waived certain daily daytime impositions of delays on certain activities that have to be approved by their board, and the building department and the clerk's office continue to expedite applications as much as they possibly can. On a positive note, the rec department reported that the baseball season began this week and two summer camps opened last week in June. Donna Prather reports to me that the kids are excited, their parents are thrilled, everything is going great, and they're very, very excited about the ability to give these kids an option to exercise their pent-up energy that's been, you know, under wraps for several months. So, unfortunately though, soccer was a sport that was, had to be canceled as it was determined to be too, too close for comfort, and there was an inability to protect the children under the guidelines required for safe distancing and other health issues. So, there's not going to be any soccer competition. And the health department, of course, continues to work with the state DPH for updates, to update our department heads on guidance that they receive daily. Those meetings, Zoom meetings and telephone conference calls continue. So, Amy Petrowski is quite diligent in her attendance at those meetings and sharing the information that comes from them. As Connor mentioned, we did transition to Westcom for our dispatch service, and at a meeting last week, both the police and fire chiefs in the town of East Long Meadow reported their satisfaction with the initial operation, and our fiscal management is going to be quite pleased with it too, and as much as it saved the taxpayers of East Long Meadow upwards of $400,000 on an annual basis. The Westcom district is, has established an operations subcommittee, and they've also established a finance subcommittee. Steve Lonergan is going to be the town's representative on the finance subcommittee, and the two chiefs obviously participate on the operations committee. I have a seat now on the Board of Directors, and Ryan Quimby has been instrumental on the technology side of things. Our DPW is working on, to complete a MassWorks grant for infrastructure in the amount of $600,000. They continue to work hard on that, although the superintendent was on vacation the last couple of weeks. So, I spoke with him yesterday, and he's, he's working hard to get that application ready to do in September. We did hire a young lady, Mariola Rivera, as our human resources specialist. She began her employment with the town yesterday, and she was treated to a tutorial today by Mary Race, so they spent quite a bit of time, Mary Race did, that is, teaching Mariola the uses of the internet in our particular setting, and showed her a variety of things that she's going to need to know. So, she's, we're very happy to have her. She worked at Westfield State University in the past, and she has a great deal of benefits administration experience. So, that's a sorely needed skill that we have in our HR department. And we will soon be posting for a new position in finance to address the vacancy I referenced earlier, as well as an administrative position in the planning department. The re-carpeting of the library, courtesy of the Friends, is due to begin tomorrow and should be finished within two or three business days. And finally, we were able to have a department heads meeting in person on July 1 at the Council on Aging Dining Room Auditorium. And as I say in my report, it was really an agenda meeting, but the purpose of it was for me personally to thank the department heads for what I carefully and thoughtfully described as their steadfast service to the community of East Long Meadow throughout this pandemic. I don't, I'm certain that the public doesn't appreciate, only because they're not there on a daily basis, but the effort that went in, that was made by every single department head to be responsive to every request that was put to them, to cooperate with each other, to support each other. And I just wanted to recognize them as individually as possible on that day. So, that was the purpose for the luncheon. And at that time, we also had the opportunity to introduce Steve to the group and to recognize all the bonus for the extraordinary contributions she made to his budget preparation over the last eight weeks. So, that's, that's the town report from me for the, for tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for Mary? I would, Mary, I would just give you a few more seconds or minutes to introduce Steve to the council and to the public.
Sure. Ryan, if you want to call him up on the screen, I think I saw him there before, but this is Stephen Lonergan. He comes to us from the city of Springfield, where he is the treasurer for the last 10 years, been employed by Springfield longer than that, but Steve's an alum of Bentley College with an undergraduate degree in accounting and an MBA also from Bentley. He's got a great deal of experience. He's already proven his worth. He's earned his annual salary this week, as a matter of fact, which I can address later, by virtue of his analysis of the budget that had been prepared. He made some significant findings, and they inure to the benefit of the taxpayers of town. So, he's with us on a full-time basis. He knows some of his colleagues already because he's the past president of the Mass Collectors Treasurers Association. So, he's very familiar with Dawn and Peter in our treasurer's and collector's office, and he has a great number of colleagues from the city of Springfield on whom he can rely should he need to, and very, very pleased to have him with us.
Steve, welcome.
Thank you.
To East Long Meadow. We appreciate the experience you're going to bring to town hall and all of our residents.
Looking forward to serving the town. It's a great honor to be picked to do this job, and I've enjoyed my time here so far. So, I'm looking forward to continuing.
Great, thank you. Okay, we can move on to approval of minutes, and in your packet, you have the June 23, 2020 regular session minutes or open session minutes. If you have any recommendations, I'll entertain those now. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for their approval.
Hearing none, motion to accept the open session minutes from our town council meeting held on June 23, 2020.
Second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Again, all of our votes, especially since we are working remotely, are by roll call, and I am just going to move the way I see you on the screen, and that would be Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Richards.
Yes.
And Mr. King.
Yes.
And Mr. Henry.
Yes.
And those minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Under communications, correspondence, and announcements, we, also in your packet, have a letter from Mr. Thomas Wheeler, the president and owner of AW Brown on Shaker Road here in East Long Meadow.
Have a letter from Mr. Thomas Wheeler, the president and owner of AW Browns on Shaker Road here in East Long Meadow. And Mr. Wheeler raises the concern about. The fact that do. A restaurant bar adjacent to his property. And now able to take advantage of outdoor dining as well, and this is just recently indoor dining. That the parking spaces. That are attributable to his property are being encroached upon. By patrons of the pizza shop establishment. And he is asking the council to. Investigate whether or not the. The loss of parking spots for his patrons. Is an enforceable offense. Just minutes before the council meeting this evening, I received, and some of you may have too, I'm not quite sure how the distribution went on that from Mr. Wheeler. But another email. Bringing to light what he perceives as some other. By alleged violations that might speak to the fact that the. Temporary license to. Serve alcohol as well as food to patrons may be in potential violation. For that reason, I will, I'm placing this matter. Under advisement for now, and I'm going to have it as an actual agenda item for next Tuesday's meeting. As well as refer this immediately tomorrow to our building inspector, our health inspector and the police chief. To investigate those potential. Allegations and then their recommendation will be before us. Especially if it relates to our needing to take action of any sort relative to the outdoor liquor license. Okay. Any questions on that?
So Kathy.
Yes.
So the original letter talked about parking. So going forwards, I believe that situation would be very similar to. The pride gas station on North Main Street when they had a complaint. That the bar across the street patrons were parking there and the remedy was a civil matter, have them towed. You have to deal with it. That's not a council issue. So I would assume the parking would be the same. And now we have a different issue through license.
I think they're, they're all concurrent. The parking issue can be addressed through the. Police enforcement. The issue of. The hours being used for the outdoor dining and serving of alcohol. May be of concern and for that reason it, we need to have the building inspector. Way in on that and. Make sure that with a tent on the property, there's still a sufficient. Parking on the pizzas shops property to alleviate the fact that patrons. By their own volition are parking at AW Browns. So that's why rather than conjecture on what might be or might not be, I want to push it out to those two departments and. Have them report back to either through in person or through a report to the council. So that we can deal with that properly next week.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Okay, we have two public hearings scheduled for this evening and the first one scheduled for 6:30 is a proposed bylaw for council. For, excuse me, for ground mounted photovoltaic systems moratorium. This is a second reading. And I will now use the. Public hearing protocol for this. This is a continuation of a public hearing from June 3rd, 2020. For a required second reading for a proposed bylaw for a ground mounted photovoltaic. Systems moratorium bylaw. I'm going to ask counselor Paige to read the proposed bylaw for us.
Certainly. The petitioner, the East Long Meadow Planning Board. The representative is Russ Denver, the planning board chairman. Proposed bylaw for ground mounted photovoltaic systems moratorium. The East Long Meadow Planning Board proposed the addition of the following articles to be inserted temporarily into the East Long Meadow's bylaws. 1991 revision until such time that moratorium is no longer in effect. 7.50 ground mounted photovoltaic systems moratorium. 7.501, notwithstanding any provision of zoning or general bylaws to the contrary. The town of the East Long Meadow hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land. Or the building of structures for ground mounted photovoltaic systems. That are at least 40,000 square feet in area or over 250 kilowatt of energy production. The moratorium shall be in effect through October 22nd, 2020. Or until such time as the town of East Long Meadow adopts zoning bylaw amendments. That regulates the installation of ground mounted photovoltaic systems, including in residential districts, whichever occurs earlier.
Thank you. Council members in this hearing tonight are, again, I'm just going by what I see on the screen since we're not in person. Counselors Hill, Paige, Anderson, Richards, Kane and Henry. And now I'll ask the petitioner, which is our planning board, some representative from them. To present the reasons and rationale for this proposed bylaw. And Mr. Quimby, do we have someone in our audience? Who can speak on behalf of the planning board? Don't see Mr. Denver in, in the list unless.
Another member, if you want to raise your hand in the app, I can pull you in.
I see Mr. Torsia in the audience. I don't know if he's prepared to speak this evening.
I could pull him in if you'd like.
Please. We'll have to put him on the spot.
He's not there.
He's gone.
Not a good idea.
Okay, do we?
So through the chair, if I may. At our last meeting, Chairman Russ Denver was here and explained the reasoning. At the very first meeting for this, and of course it's required that we do a second reading before any votes taken. We also had our attorney look over the language and he made a couple of suggestions. On possible changes that we should consider. I think the chairman of the planning board felt that after he was here the first meeting, he pretty much explained what they were looking for. And that's probably why he's not at this meeting.
Okay, is this council comfortable with Ralph's interpretation since he. Was present and we all were for the first reading as well as he serves on our planning matters subcommittee. Are, is that sufficient to stand as the petition? Mr. Henry.
I'm comfortable with that Kathy, thank you very much, but I do have questions. Ralph, what were the changes that the lawyer made? Because I suggested a couple of changes in the wording, which I found very confusing. So I'm interested if Ralph knows what changes he made.
He, Ralph's prepared to probably do that, but I have to go in order for the protocol and the public input comes before council input, so.
Sorry.
No, no problem. Your questions will get answered. So that said, the segue is to the, anyone in our viewing audience or public now has an opportunity for input. I would ask speakers to state their name and address. And. Be specific in their comments, so I'll let Mr. Quimby decide if he sees any hands being raised there.
If they're in the audience and would like to talk, just raise your hand in the app. I'm not seeing any.
Okay, well, hearing none, I'm going to. Close the public hearing and now the council can discuss the matter and any public input. Provided and then we will move to either approve the matter, deny the matter. Or. Continue the hearing in order to take the matter under advisement, so.
Late hand raised.
Okay. Have to reopen the hearing, go ahead.
Pull him in right now.
Are they audio or video? We don't know. Oh, gotcha.
Hi, Craig from 79, 799 Parker Street. My only concern about the bylaw was it appeared to be open ended on the timeframe required to take action. It was October something or. Whatever. I think there should be more of a timeframe put on making a decision and a final ruling on it. As far as how long the moratorium goes for.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
We, I, we can't go back and forth here, but just specifically Craig. I believe Ralph will be able to answer that for you with what he's going to offer in a minute. Okay, anybody else in the viewing audience wishing to make a statement?
Thank you, Claire.
Okay, we're, I will again close the hearing and now revert back to council input and comment. And so Ralph, probably if you give the attorney's input that will jumpstart the conversation.
Absolutely. Jesse had made a suggestion that we change the effective date, which originally been October 22nd, 2020. To something that was current, possibly like the first, close to the first reading or a year from what the first reading was. Because he didn't feel, feel as though this gives us enough time from July to October to be able to do this. The second input he had was that he suggested we include a separate paragraph or line, which states the purpose. Why are we creating this bylaw? He said the AG is very concerned about just doing open ended moratoriums and there has to be a reason behind why we're doing it. And as far as Craig's question, the last line states whichever occurs earlier. So it would be either October 22nd, 2020 or a date that we choose. Or if we get the bylaw created sooner than that, it would be that date. So it's not open ended, most, the longest period it would be would be whatever date we put in on this.
Any other council comments? Pat, did that satisfy? Go ahead.
Thank you Kathy. No, I'm, I'm now a little confused. I thought. Is this now going to the bylaw committee? Because otherwise I would expect that Jesse's comments would have been read into this second reading. So that our public could have seen what. What it is that we're actually voting on, what date we're actually voting on and what other wording, like the, the reason might be in there. It seems to me that we perhaps should continue this until we have more accurate wording. That the planning board has agreed on and submitted to us.
Anyone else? Ralph?
So Pat, I understand what you're saying. I think at the public hearing, what we're trying to do as a council is take in. Any information from the public that we deem necessary, any information from the counselors. And then make amendments on the floor. We don't have to vote on it tonight, but we put changes in place. Such as the date and the purpose. And then we can continue the public hearing. If so, choose. At that point, send it to the bylaw committee, whatever the process the council chooses. I did read your comments and. You made a couple of very good points that I think should be included.
Marilyn and then Pat.
Ralph and to the committee, I had submitted to Ralph a draft purpose. In terms of some information that I thought should be included in this process. And I don't, I could certainly read it into the record. Ralph, I'm not sure what you did with that information. Is, is, you know, I'm, I'm happy to read it into the record. You want to read it? Do you want me to read?
I, like I said, I think this is the process that we go through is people make suggestions on the purpose. Language however we need to. And the vote on how we want the. The final product to look.
Well, why don't I please just read the words I put together into the record? And, and we can take them under advisement and go from there if that's okay. The town of East Long Meadow, along with other neighboring communities, has experienced increased interest. In the development of large scale commercially operated ground mounted photovoltaic installations. With the potential for utilizing existing farmland or heavily treed forests for such development. Within East Long Meadow, existing farmland and forest land are locally within the residential zone. March of 2012, the town adopted a zoning bylaw that addresses commercial ground mounted photovoltaic installations. Requiring that these operations be located as of right. Within the industrial and industrial garden park zoning districts already designated for such large scale industrial use. Within the town's commitment to renewable energy and while other zoning districts are encouraged. To utilize rooftop or carport top solar systems. The town's bylaw was recently challenged when a residential parcel was purchased for the sole purpose. Of the development of such a commercial operation and the request for a zone change to industrial was denied. The town is desirous of striking a value of renewable energy options. Along with the rights of property owners. Rights to abutters and the overall needs of the town. The purpose of this moratorium is to carve out sufficient time to review the existing language of the current bylaw. In order to address modifications that speak to the interests of the town and its citizens.
Thank you. Pat?
My concern is that this would be what we are voting on. I think that sounded great. I think if we had that and the, and another date. In there. But my concern is, is this the way we're really supposed to do business or are we not supposed to have something written down in front of us to, to work on? I understand what Ralph is saying. We can make it up as we go along, but I'm uncomfortable with that.
Anyone else? Marilyn?
Do we want to take, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we bureaucratically bog this down, but if. If, if it would take one meeting of the planning matter subcommittee to put this information together to bring back. To the council, that would make it a smoother operation. I for one would say that's a good thing.
I think it would be beneficial to at least on visual, so I'd like to see a, you know, the, the revised bylaw with all of the thoughts incorporated into it. So that we have a document that we can react to. Jackie, I mean, Jeanie. Jeanie, go ahead.
I think we also should have something. This additional language we can post on the website is what we usually do with proposed bylaws too. So the public can view the amendments and also have any, any comments for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with bringing it before the planning matters subcommittee for review and comment. And plus we'll have a separate zoom meeting for other opportunity for the public to chime in if so desired.
So, Pat?
May I make a motion, Kathy?
Yes, you may.
I move that we continue the public hearing for a proposed bylaw for ground-mounted photovoltaic systems moratorium to August 11th, 2020 at 6:30 PM.
We need a second for that? Second. Thank you. Motion's been made in seconds. Further discussion? Ralph?
I think it's a little premature right now to continue this. I think what we should do is take a vote on whether or not we like the thought of this language and whether or not we're going to send this to the Planning Matters Subcommittee to recompile it and send it back to us. I think just continuing this, we're nowhere, because even though the purpose was read in, it wasn't voted on. So it's still not part of it. A change of the date's still not part of it. So at this time, the only thing that is here is the original document. I think continuing it, like I said, I think we should look at the date, like Jesse said, take a vote on whether or not we want to extend it a year. And then, once we make those decisions, send that to the Subcommittee. Otherwise, they're starting from scratch again.
Don, did you, yes?
Yeah, so Ralph, you're saying to close the public hearing, vote on it, and then make changes so that the meter isn't running, because we just can't close, I mean, can't continue to an undetermined date, correct?
Correct.
What my thought was through the chair is to take some basic votes on whether or not we want to add a purpose, whether or not we want to change the date. Continue the public hearing, like Pat said afterwards, to August 11th, knowing that we are sending this to the Planning Matters Subcommittee and they will have a report back to us.
And Jeanie, I look back to you then, assuming that the Planning Matters Subcommittee meets within, how far out are we till August 11th? Or a full month? Okay, so you'll have enough time for posting properly with the altered bylaw, or no?
Do you mean for a brand-new public hearing?
No, for a continuation.
I have to post it, because it will continue to a date that we would advertise. If the motion is to continue till August 11, we don't have to repost it, because it's already a public hearing. It's being stated it's being continued in this public hearing.
Did I see another hand? Pat?
Through the chair, I believe that the motion to include such information as us voting on something that we're now asking the planning board to do is really extraneous to the motion. He says, let's postpone this public hearing and assume that all these things will happen. It seems to me that it's incumbent on the planning board to present to us their suggestion. And if this, if this presentation tonight means that they have submitted to us something that they and the lawyers disagree with, then we really have nothing to vote on. I'm very uncomfortable with sending instructions to the planning board.
Planning Board or Planning Matters Subcommittee?
Planning Matters Subcommittee, and as to, sorry, as to what we want them to do, when it really should work the other way around, and we can agree or disagree. So anyway, I would not like to amend my motion. I would like to leave the motion as it is and let the town various subcommittees work within, knowing that there's a month to make a better, a more complete presentation.
Thank you. Tom?
I'm trying to recall, but I thought there was some clock that was ticking on this, that we had to make a decision within a rumble because of installation that was previously discussed. Is that true?
The passage of this bylaw would have no bearing on previous products that would be on the docket or discussion in town. It would only be going forward.
Right, but would this jeopardize that timing if someone came for it next week or the week after?
No, because they're two separate issues.
Okay.
They'll be on notice already. We already have public hearings, so they will not be grandfathered in at this point, because it's already, this is already in the pipeline.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to continue the public hearing until August 11th at 6:30. Further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, with a question. Did we have a second on that motion?
We did, Marilyn.
Okay.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved and this matter will be on the August 11 agenda at 6:30, as well as the input will be given to, over to Don's committee to reword, rework, whatever, wordsmith, and bring it back for further discussion. Thank you. As a point of information, back on the agenda under approval of minutes, it occurred to me that I did not vote on that, Jackie. So I am a yes if you want to adjust that for the record. Okay, it is at 7 o'clock. In one minute, we can go to the review of the proposed FY '21 Town Manager's Operating Budget per Article 6, Section 1 of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter. It is exactly 7 o'clock, so Ms. McNally, you're on.
On July 1st, I drafted a budget message that was included with the package that was disseminated to you on Friday.
Excuse me, Kathy?
Yes.
You have to open the public hearing?
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Too many papers here. Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing and this is a public hearing to present the town manager's proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2021 for the opportunity for public comment, as outlined in Article 6, Section 1 of the East Long Meadow Home Rule Charter. Council members are Paige, Anderson, O'Connor, Richards, Hill, Kane, and Henry. And now, Ms. McNally, you're on.
Thank you. As I started to say, on July 1st, I finished the draft of this budget message that was included in the package that was sent to you on Friday, I believe, and posted on the town's website and Facebook page for at least an initial public review. In that message, I tried to not belabor the point that we're all very painfully aware of, and that is the presence, the overriding presence of the COVID pandemic, which has essentially brought our progress in municipal operations, I think, to a halt for the last four months. We've been sort of on a treadmill where we're just trying to maintain core services, keep the public's requests for service honored, and keep our employees engaged, supported, and maintain our municipal services, as I said. The difficulty in preparing the budget was essentially because we don't have a state budget on which we can rely for our revenue stream. We do have some certainty with respect to our own maximum levy capacity, as well as some of our local receipts that we have significantly reduced in our estimates for purposes of this budget presentation. But having said that, I guess the underlying point of this is that this is a work in progress. And again, I want to praise the department heads. I know they won't be tired of hearing me say this, but each of the department heads essentially submitted at least two, if not three, and in some cases, four versions of their draft budgets. We started this process last December and everyone was quite enthused, thinking that, great, we're getting a jumpstart on this and we're going to be, we did all our budget reviews, initial budget reviews in January and February. And then, lo and behold, March came and the world was sort of turned on its head. So in April, when the original draft should have been filed, we had our draft operational budget ready, but that was precisely the time at which that it became apparent to me that we were going to need to furlough employees and we, in fact, furloughed 19 people from the town's employ in various percentages. And that, those decisions were obviously very difficult ones. They were made with the assistance of the respective department heads and they were done in an effort to reduce expenses in fiscal '20 in the hopes that if revenues fell off the cliff, as they did in some categories, that we would be still reasonably well-positioned to maintain our obligations for the balance of fiscal '20 and make a reasonable effort at a fiscally responsible budget for fiscal '21. Most of those employees have not yet returned to service. Some of them have, in the DPW in particular, but a lot of our administrative personnel are still working from home where necessary and some are still on furlough. So having said that as the backdrop, this budget is, it's not bare bones, it's a mere skeleton. If you look through the departmental uses, I don't think there's a single department that shows an increase, with the exception of schools, as Mr. Thompson pointed out, and even that increase is only after a significant reduction in what their original submission was and in our human resources department. Those are really the only two budgets that have gone up. And HR went up in particular, because we, the town has really, in my view, suffered from the lack of having a full-time human resources director. Through the grace of friendships and golf, we have a part-time director, who's a friend of mine from, of longstanding, who is a career HR specialist, as you all know and have come to know her. She has done an enormously fantastic job dealing with the pent-up demand for HR's assistance throughout the town. And by that, I mean with the combination of the pandemic on top of it, which created a number of additional federal benefits for employees to take advantage of, and then the regular mundane employee problems, I don't mean to diminish them, but the normal difficulties of running a workforce. There was no availability for redress for employee, I'll call them grievances, although not in the formal way of a union contest, but Elaine has done terrific work and I think everybody in the town hall truly appreciates how important it is to have a full-time director. And she won't be there for much longer. She has not given me a notice date, but I know that she would prefer to be retired. And we talked just today about the possibility of preparing a job description and setting up an interview schedule and things of that nature. So the, I digress a bit, but the increase department is due to the fact that there's a salary item for the director, which is intended to attract a quality candidate, so. Do you want me to go through this line by line to show you where the resources or the revenue streams are coming from? Because I'm happy to do that to the extent that you want that level of detail. Or I can sort of give you the thumbnail version and wait for your questions, depending on your preference.
What's the council's pleasure here? I'm sorry, I couldn't see with the light. Mr. Kane and then Pat, Mr. Henry.
I would say the thumbnail version would work for me, but I am on the Budget Finance Committee and capital, so it might not work for everybody else, but that's my opinion.
Pat?
Thank you, Ken. I think the thumbnail budget would work for me as well. I believe all of us had a chance to look through. The thumbnail version would raise issues, which I think Mary should have an opportunity to tell us are the ones that worry her and so should worry us. And for the rest of them, we probably made our own questions and we can ask our questions later, so thumbnail version.
And I will add for the record that our June, June, here I go again, July 21st meeting, next Tuesday, the Financial Matters Subcommittee will make its report to the council. And that also should add some more detail for the council as well.
Okay, well, then, having heard you, your views on that, the budget essentially tries to meet the town priorities, which I think, at least from my point of view, and I think from yours, are education, public health and safety, and maintenance of our infrastructure. And those three major categories comprise pretty much every department in one sense or another. We have projected revenues this year of $65,383,890. Those revenues are comprised of our personal property and real estate tax levy, our new growth, our local receipts, some transfers from the Community Preservation Commission to the General Fund, which pays for the debt service on projects, community preservation. A Chapter 70, which aid from the state, which we have used the figure from fiscal '20. So that's a level-funded amount. We have unrestricted general government aid, which we have estimated to be, we've cut that by what we thought was 14%. That's an arbitrary number, however, it came to my attention from the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation and in conversations that I had with a couple of my colleagues across Western Mass, anyway, about how they were projecting how much of a deficit to project in the aid from Commonwealth. So 14% seemed to be sort of a common number and the net effect of that is 11 and 1/2% on our unrestricted general government aid. And then we have a small school building association reimbursement. So all of those things put together, and they're all itemized, by the way, on the preliminary page of your budget. The local receipts are itemized on the second page, and just to show you how conservative we've been, on the meals tax, for instance, we reduced that estimate by $65,000 based on the pandemic. And that's based on the fact that the average receipts in a normal year are $20,000, $21,000 a month. So since restaurants were effectively closed for three months, we assumed that it was reasonable to expect three months less revenue on that. So that number in fiscal '20 was $265,000, $260,000, and we're estimating only $195,000 this year. Now, I hope I'm wrong, that when the economy rebounds, that we get a bump here, but I'm also not born yesterday, like you, Madam President, but I don't expect that we're going to have a sharp economic recovery immediately. I think the town is in good shape, based on the information that our treasurer gives me weekly, that our receipts are keeping pace. We have not fallen behind and we do not have a deficit as a result of fiscal '20. So we're fortunate in that regard, but so we have to live within our means, is what I'm trying to get across here, and And the, the revenue sources of just over sixty-three million prompted the departments to be encouraged to cut their budgets wherever possible. As I said, the furloughed people have not been completely returned to the workforce. Various departments are working with positions that are vacant, that have not been filled. Parks, in particular, Parks and Rec. One of their primary staff members resigned from the town on March thirteenth, and that position has not been filled. That's just an example. I mean, basically, I think every department could certainly benefit by increases in their budget. I know our finance office is very far behind on many, many, many administrative tasks, all of which inure to the well-being or a lack thereof of our employees. And that's a very serious matter. But we're doing what the best we can do with, with minimal resources. And so when I say this is a skeleton budget, it's, it's core services only. And, and we've made every effort to, possible. So the total service, the total uses out of that sixty-three million come out to six-three million, seven-hundred-four thousand. And there'll be a couple of adjustments here when you get the final version of this next week. Just, that's due to Steve Lonergan's contributions, as well as working with Don and Olga. In the first week, Steve found a ninety-seven thousand dollar change in our debt service schedule that is reflected in this draft. But I think it goes to show, when you don't have sufficiently, not, not that, not that it's not a competence issue, but when you don't have sufficient bodies and feet on the ground, it's very hard to maintain the level of service that you, that you want. And I know every, I know finance is in that boat. I've heard the same refrain from the police department. I know the health department could use assistance. Recreation, certainly. The assessors have struggled with, with downsized staff. Collector, Treasurer, and the Clerk's Office are sharing an employee who was doing a great job for both of them. But each of those departments wanted a full-time person, and they've ended up splitting, as I said, splitting one. So anyway, we've increased our expenses by about one point six million. And the sum and substance of that is workers' comp at a hundred thousand. Our health and life insurance premiums have gone up tremendously. And our retirement contribution, those three items constitute ninety-four percent of the, of the increase in, in the expenses this year. So that is the thumbnail sketch. There's a capital budget included here as well, that's just over a million dollars. And that's the basis, those recommendations are the basis, are made on the basis of an evaluation from the Capital Planning Committee. The chief among them is a feasibility study for the high school to determine whether rehabilitation or construction of a new school is, is warranted. That's, that's over a million dollars. The debt service on that is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, give or take. That would be reflected in this year's mill rate. Other, other capital uses are the, a couple of trucks. One truck that's, you know, twenty-three years old out of the DPW that can be funded, we think, from a vehicle reserve out of the sewer enterprise fund. There's a fifty-eight thousand dollar truck listed. And Olga and Steve are researching today and tomorrow to determine the balance in that account, to see if we can avoid, avoid bonding that and purchase it outright for cash, or lease it and save money that way. But primarily, the capital projects are those that are contractual in nature. We need to pay the fourth year of our fire truck lease. There are significant upgrades sought in the IT department for a server upgrade, firewall upgrade, replenishment of our Chromebook devices, and equipment replacement for desktops and things of that nature. And I know the council should take great pride in itself for its vote to authorize those Chromebook purchases last year. Who knew? No one knew, obviously, about this pandemic and the results and the consequences of it. But our kids in East Long Meadow, I think, are very well-served by the fact that they have these devices and teachers who are knowledgeable and how to teach through them. So they get broken, and they get lost, and they get damaged. And this is an attempt to replenish the supply. My recommendation is only half of what Ryan's department suggested. They were looking for an investment of another hundred thousand dollars. We voted in the committee to recommend a fifty thousand dollar expense for that on the equipment replacement, which again is, again, it's, the technology is not supported anymore in many cases. And the IT department was looking for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of replenishments there. And we voted as a committee to authorize or to recommend seventy-five thousand. Firewall upgrade, with the nature of cyber attacks these days, is absolutely necessary, in my opinion. The server upgrade services, our, our cameras in town. If these things are lost, you know, it's like, when they're working, everything's fine. And, and who really thinks about it? And it's only when something breaks or is out of service that the loss of it becomes very dramatic. There is a nineteen ninety-six dump truck from DPW, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I watched the LCAT presentation of last year's budget, and someone from the audience got up and said, I can't believe a truck, a dump truck, costs two hundred thousand. He said, I hope East Long Meadow never has to pay that much money for a truck. That's not a bad price for these trucks. I mean, when you think that they can last thirty years, and they serve the community remarkably. The pictures that Bruce Fenny has of the trucks that his crew is operating now, believe me, they'd scare you. You wouldn't want to get in. And you wouldn't want anybody you cared about to get in those vehicles. There's also a request for a recommendation for one more SUV cruiser for the police department and a lawnmower to maintain the Parks and Rec, well, it's for DPW, but it's to maintain the athletic fields for the kids. The current lawnmower is a two thousand and three Toro that I'm told was purchased, used, when it was nine years old. And it consistently breaks down and causes the department to be unable to meet the standards that it would like to maintain for those athletic fields. Then there are a series of other projects that would be bonded from the respective enterprise funds that they serve. Water, sewer, there's a public, obviously, these are DPW issues. The main one, though, goes with this inflow and infiltration sewer rehabilitation and metering project, water meter modules. These are all technological infrastructure pieces that would, in the long term, assist East Long Meadow in making sure that it's paying the proper amount for water received and sewage discharge through the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Bruce Fenny certainly can speak to the detail of it. I have made my cryptic notes in the column that is next to the particular asset that we're talking about. And last but not least, there is the year two of three years on the ambulance that we purchased, or leased, as of last year. So that's sort of the thumbnail sketch. And I hope I didn't speak too long or too many numbers to bore you to tears. But it's, it's an arduous process. One of the department heads called me this morning about another matter and said, I can't believe we've been working on this budget for seven months. And I said, neither can I. We have, and will continue to do so until it's finished. I do want to thank, in addition to the department heads, I really do want to thank the members of the Financial Oversight Committee, who worked very well with the drafts that I continued to provide them. Were very helpful in their, with their recommendations and their courteous and cooperative support of me and efforts to reach a, a budget that's fiscally responsible, that we can live with, that we can afford, that we can maintain what we need to do. And that's where we are, as of tonight.
Thank you. At this point, the public has an opportunity to ask questions or offer input. So Ryan, again, I'll turn to you and see if there are members in our audience that would like to have an opportunity to speak.
All right, there you go.
One. Connor Roche.
Hi again.
Welcome back.
Connor Roche, twenty Tangowood Drive. I first wanted to say that overall, the budget looked really good. And I was impressed that a number of departments, including like the DPW, Fire, Council on Aging, significantly reduced their budget this year. And the ambulance even turned a profit. I was surprised that the estimated increase of a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars in local receipts, it seemed a little bit high, considering how many things have been shut down for so long. And maybe we didn't realize it this year, but perhaps next. A hundred forty thousand dollars in legal services seemed quite excessive, especially considering the real possibility that it could go past the budget like it did this past year. And I question whether the continued litigation is really in the best interest of the taxpayers of East Long Meadow. Part of the increase for non-salary and the Health Department was listed as mosquito control. And I was wondering if something was being done differently this year for mosquito control compared to last year, given the West Nile virus outbreak that we had. The town's debt service also continues to rise each year, this year at almost five percent. And if a capital project such as the high school were to be undertaken, it would mean a large increase in taxation. I didn't quite get the answer from the, watching the meetings of the Financial Oversight Committee, but the electrical gear switch replacement capital project for the high school, I'm wondering if that's something that would actually have use if the high school were to be renovated or replaced? If not, then it seems like it would be putting the cart before the horse. Additionally, I was outspoken at last year's public hearing on the one-to-one Chromebook devices. But I recognize that they have come in handy with the distance learning this past school year. My concern now is that, at the time that the vote was taken to approve that last year, it was known that there would be a continued cost to keep the program operational. And to the amount, reducing it in half to try to be fiscally responsible this year. But if the town is unwilling to pay the full amount this year, I would be surprised that we would want to pay twice the amount next year, or potentially three times the amount in the following year to catch up with the backlog of outdated devices. And then, as a reminder for the public audience, the Town Council last year estimated the budget tax rate to be twenty-one dollars and seventy cents on May twenty-eighth. And then the tax rate wound up being set at twenty dollars and eighty-four cents on November sixth of twenty nineteen. The decrease to the proposed tax rate, but still twenty-nine cent increase from the prior year, was a result of unanticipated new growth and additional revenue. But it was not as a result of the cuts made in the budget when it was approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, Ryan, wishing to speak?
I do not see any.
Okay, then, that said, I will close the public hearing.
Yeah, do you have one more?
Unclose the public hearing. Go ahead.
Pull him in right now.
And I'm unmuted, correct?
I am look, okay, who do we have? Oh.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Don.
Don Starks, twenty-eight Elm Street. I just had a quick little question regarding the lawnmower. I do know that most manufacturers of lawnmowers, especially from municipalities and mowers that cost upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, they offer bid assistance, which can oftentimes cut the price by thousands of dollars, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. I would strongly recommend that that route, if you choose to purchase a lawnmower, is pursued. And I also want to say, I appreciate all of the work and that you have. Mary, I really like the fact that you've put so much work into it. And we all know you're up against it, and we, as taxpayers, really, really appreciate it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one more time, Ryan. Any more hands in the air?
Yes, we have one more. Oh, we did, he's gone. Oh, he's back. It's a familiar face.
Hi, Craig.
Good evening, back again. Regarding, Don just brought up the lawnmower. One of the things that, that I was curious about is if we've looked at is, is the option of subcontracting out some of this field maintenance? And as, as well as the new truck? You know, one of the things that most other towns don't do is plow all their own streets. Do we consider subcontracting out some of these services? As opposed to doing them in-house, buying more equipment that requires depreciation and maintenance? As well as having the staff on board that increases our pension liability? Can, can we look at maybe subcontracting some of that out to decrease all of these costs? Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Ryan, any more hands?
I believe we're good.
All righty then. The public input is finished, and the hearing is closed. Now the council has an opportunity to discuss the matter, and any public input provided. Don.
Thanks, Kathy. Question, just maybe a little more on the, on workman's comp, almost forty percent, hundred thousand dollars nearly. We have less employees or more employees, or is it a function of just the claims history and so forth?
It's a function of claims history, I'm told, Don, that it's an average of the three years prior. And every third year, it's reevaluated and we, so they keep promising us it's going to go down. We shall see. That's what, that's what I'm told, yeah.
Okay, I just had a gut, I just needed to hear it. Then the second question is the election salaries. It's line one sixty-two salary, that's a forty-two point three. Is that because of the more elections during this fiscal year?
That's the primary reason, yes. There's four, right, Jeanne? And I'd love to call on my department heads to help me with this stuff. Did you hear that question, Jean?
I did. So that, that line code was just created a couple of years ago, because that is always fluid. It's specifically reliant on the amount of elections we have for the year. So it's going to move around from year to year, based on how many elections we have. And we have three for this year. The primary presidential, and then the local election next year.
Thank you.
Next year, so it should be a lot less next year.
Anybody else?
Question. Mira, I've got a question with regards to the police cruiser. In the past, the council had done two cruisers based on public safety. I know last year, they had approved for a pickup truck. And to my knowledge, that was never purchased. So is this, are we still going to purchase a vehicle off of last year's budget? Because the money was there, and then another one this year? Or did we do away with that? That money's going back to General Fund, and we're only buying one?
No, there's one on order right now that was intended to be purchased. No, there's one on order right now that was intended to be purchased in fiscal 20 that I don't really know the precise reasons why it didn't happen, but it had something to do with it not being ordered within a certain timeframe. I don't I don't see Jeff, Chief D'Alessio, on my list here of participants, but we that is that vehicle should be coming in any day now, but it's being paid for out of fiscal 20 money because it's been ordered and paid for.
Jeff's on.
Is he?
Yep.
I pulled him in.
That's why there's only one vehicle for this this capital year.
So is that adequate to keep up the rotation of the vehicles that we had planned on, which was two each year and take the two oldest out?
Well, I'm gonna I'm gonna say yes, because they went the bulk of this year with without that second cruiser that they're getting now or will get very shortly and then this one next year. But chief, you can answer that better than I can.
Yeah, so it's been the goal of the town in the past, to fund two cruisers every fiscal year. We got a little bind last year. So they're ordered late this year. So they're coming still coming in now. So in an effort to keep costs down with the town and in the spirit of cooperating with the budget, we are trying to get by with one less this year. I believe I look at the capital plan, there's one scheduled coming up this year after July 1. So that'll put basically three new cruisers in our in our fleet in a short period. Well, I wouldn't say a short period of time, but within the next eight months, we should have three new cruisers if we can order this July 1 budgetary one right away. So I'm thinking to get us to the next year. We should be somewhat okay, only but prolong the process of getting these current two cars that are on order right now. So they're coming in a little bunch and that's going to help us out in the short term. We will have, again, maybe as we look toward the year from now, where we stand. But the turnaround time for the cruisers is unfortunately, it's six months sometimes. And that's the problem. You just can't go to the lot and pick one off and get it. The manufacturers were in we're in beholden to them when they cut production off of certain cars, on certain models, etc. And there's not a lot out there to pick from from different manufacturers. There's only two basic ones or three. If you want to do the Chevy, the Chrysler and the Ford. But the problem again is the turnaround time to get a cruiser. And that's the that's the juggling of money to get them into our possession sooner than later. But we're at the we're at the mercy of a lot of different people. Again, the manufacturer, the upfitter and in the dealership itself.
Okay, I just understand that as they get older, there's a lot more repairs. Obviously, everyone knows or probably seen my vehicles and know what the repair costs are as compared to the new. And that's what brought up the question. Thank you.
Yep. I just want to add that they run pretty much 24/7 on a given day, the cars are constantly costing money and the mileage piles up pretty quick. So even though they might be fairly new in age, year-wise, they have a lot of miles, but on fairly quickly.
Any other comments from the council? Questions? Hearing none. Ralph?
I've got one more and it's in regards to on the capital project, the new mower. Believe it was three years ago that we purchased a mower, one of the large 12, 13-foot Toro machines. And then I believe an older one was purchased as a backup. I'm just curious. I mean, I know before that we had two smaller machines doing everything. So now, all of a sudden, we're going to need two 12 or 14 foot machines. It seems like a lot of money. I'm just curious how many hours are on the newest one, what the maintenance is like on it? Is it breaking down or something?
Um.
I think Bruce is with us, no?
Yeah.
He's there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So Ralph, the the mower we're looking for is we always have, we've always had two large mowers. So this is obviously to replace. We used to have two Hustler mowers that broke down maybe about five, six years ago. So we ended up purchasing this 2003 Toro in 2012. And it was actually through Field Turf and Enfield. And that was just obviously to keep us on track. So that's a large mower. So typically, we have two large mowers at all times to help maintain our fields in order to keep up. And that actually that old mower actually for a golf course. So it's really not indicative of what we currently should be using that mower for, but it's helping us get through.
So Bruce, I'm just curious, your two Hustlers, before we ended up buying this 2003, what size were those?
Those were, I believe, ten. Those were, I believe, were 10-foot mowers. Those are no longer in service. They haven't been in service for about five years. They actually been jumped already. So.
And Kathy, one last question. I do know Craig had asked if we had ever looked into outsourcing some of the mowing, maybe not all of it, maybe half of it, maybe the schools, maybe the park, to see if there's any type of savings.
Right. I never have. It's typically cheaper to do things in-house with our current staff, just because when it comes to outsourcing anything, you typically are prevailing paying prevailing wages. So typically, it's more expensive. I have when ran the numbers or even even was proposed that question in the past. So I don't have specific information. But I did hear Craig on the plowing portion for the town to be song metal and that would be significantly higher as well when it comes to the labor charges too. And we would be at the mercy of the contractors doing the work and fitting it into their schedule. Typically, on some given days during the week, during the heavy growing season, as you well know, you may have to cut twice per week. You know what I mean? Depending on fertilizer and weather and everything else. So I don't think it would be a good idea to do that. But if the council would like me to investigate on both ends even further and give you actual numbers at a later date, I'll be more than happy to do
Any other counselors with questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. I think that's Ralph.
Is it really?
And there's a typo there.
It says Ralph. Okay. I move to continue the public hearing for the proposed FY21 town manager's operating budget to July 21, 2020 at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the discussion.
Kathy?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, a few minutes ago, you closed the public hearing.
I did. The public hearing gets closed after public input.
So how can we continue the public hearing if it's already been closed?
Jeanne?
That's a good question.
I think Kathy meant to say she closed public comment. Perry came out the other way. So I'll leave that up to Kathy to address.
Old getting old.
So only the public comment portion has been closed, but the public hearing is still open at this time.
And so therefore, your motion is on the table. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Again, this is a roll call vote. Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So this public hearing is continued for one week from today, July 21. What did we just say?
6:30.
6:30. All right. Good. Thank you. Okay, two orders of the day. We have nothing before us this evening on licensing matters. But under financial matters, we have the approval of deficit spending for a single month budget request. Mary?
Thank you. I don't know that this is necessary, but it was prepared for your action on the assumption that the budget was not passed before the end of July, because it deals with the 1/12 budget spending for August, which obviously won't be necessary if the budget in fact is approved next Tuesday night. So you can act on it if you wish and we'll hold it in abeyance unless necessary. And if it's if it becomes necessary, we'll have the authority. If for any reason, the budget is not approved next Tuesday night, that.
Why don't we move this to next this agenda item to next Tuesday and have it follow the public hearing and whatever vote the council takes on the budget?
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you. And then under financial matters, B2, the to appropriate Chapter 90 FY20 apportionment of $581,503.
You know, I have a motion for the council's approval prepared, but in a series of motions that, as you did last year, when you had the 16 motions about approving appropriations and approving enterprise funds. And so the Chapter 90 is one of those, and it is the same amount. So whether you want to approve it tonight, I don't have a motion prepared for it that I that I have submitted to the clerk yet. I was intending to do that next week.
Well, then I my comment would be the same. Let's just postpone this. If it's in fact inherent in the 16 various votes that we have to take to approve and allocate the budget, then why don't we do that next week? I'm looking to Jeanne to see if that's correct.
This was a separate request from the DPW to include this with tonight's agenda, but I'm sure can be included within motions that were prepared for the budget.
Okay.
If it's for the same purpose.
Right. We'll move that as well. Thank you. Okay, now we have nothing under all business, under new business. D1, the review and release of executive session minutes. That memo is in your packet. And for our audience, a town bylaw that on a, I don't know if the actual wording is an annual basis, but that's the the timeframe we're using that a decisions have to be made on whether or not topics that appear under executive session and their minutes are able to be released for disclosure to the public or not released. Become a function of the council president on an annual basis. We had 10 executive sessions from July 1 of 2019 through June 30 of this year. And I have reviewed all of those with our clerk. And I've based on the intent of the open meeting law and the conditions about releasing or not, I can tell you that five of the executive sessions have are suitable to be released for a public review, should they request that. And five of the executive session minutes continue to need to be retained because for the most part, they deal with ongoing litigation, other or contract negotiations. Any questions And pretty much that's my report under that. Okay, will you all go?
Kathy?
Yes.
Need a motion to retain those?
Oh, yes, we do need that motion.
I would move that the town council executive session minutes from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020 be made disclosable, except for those marked as retained on the on President Hill's July 9, 2020 document as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none. Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that motion passes unanimously. And now we are under D2 of new business, and that is the reorganization of the town council for Article 2, Section 3 of the charter. Again, for those in our viewing audience, the charter mandates that at the town council's first business meeting of the new fiscal year with when the full council is present, they must reorganize and elect a president and a vice president, each of which to serve a one-year term. So that being said, tonight's the night to take care of that business. I want to first, before we speak about nominations, thank my colleagues on the council and all of the department heads. The opportunity to work with them, it was a great honor. I though I was very busy most of the time, I loved every minute of it. And would like to say that there are excellent and good loyal people working for this town to do the very best they can to deliver great service, as well as I echo the same for my colleagues on the council, who come to the table every meeting to again do their very best to make sure that we can deliver the very best product of town service and a reasonable budget for everyone. So I thank you again, and I look forward to my time on the council, but not in the main chair. And so that being said, I will entertain a nomination for council president. Tom?
I move to appoint Mike Kane as our council president.
Nominate. Yeah. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to nominate Michael Kane for president. Are there other nominations for president? Is someone going to get that phone?
Someone's calling in.
Hearing no other nominations, we have a nomination for Michael Kane to become council president. I will begin the voting this evening for that. And my vote is yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes.
Myself?
I'm sorry, Tom. I don't want to buy you.
Yes.
It's an oversight. I'm getting old.
That's okay.
Older. Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously to elect Michael Kane president. And now we will entertain a motion for vice and the nomination for vice.
I move to nominate Tom O'Connor as vice president.
If Michael's the president, should he be calling this vote?
I guess he could. Jeanne?
I would say yes, because at prior meetings, as soon as the president was nominated, they took right over.
Okay. Well, I don't have a gavel in my hand to offer to you, Mike, but in a euphemistic sort of way, there you are, sir, with the gavel. Congratulations and good luck, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That being said, I believe we have a nomination. Ralph?
Yes, I move to nominate Tom O'Connor as vice president.
Yep. Just have to see if there's other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll start with Kathy.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I am a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm working my way around the Hollywood Squares. Been completed. Congratulations, Tom. And I'm just looking here to see if there is any other business. Right now, I guess if we move toward summary action items, I would look at those that we moved. I believe we've tabled two, two that we spoke of, and will be back to a public hearing. Any other action items that anyone would like to bring forward? That being said, we have nothing scheduled for executive session tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Patrick?
Thank you, Mike. Yes, I would like to discuss, I'd like to thank Kathy for doing such a fine job as president. She's unfailingly pleasant and professional, even when we disagreed on several policy issues, and I would ask to be recognized. She always recognized me with a smile and never once with an eye roll. We're all indebted to you, Kathy, for your two years as president. I have no doubt you'll continue to be a strong voice for the town and its residents going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
It was my pleasure to serve alongside you as vice and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And we had a motion to adjourn. It was moved. Was there a second?
Yes.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll start with a roll call again. Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Patrick?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 7:55. Thank you.
See everybody next week.
Good evening.
Bye, Don.
Night.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.